Well, thank for this privilege to be here today. We thank our county commissioners and the work they do and the things they do behind the scenes for us to have a good county. If you give them the wisdom they need at this meeting today, please be with them and help them, Jordan. Thank for being so gracious and kind to us, help us in Rowan County, help our county commissioners today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll hear from our clerk of court here today, but we just want to honor our clerk of court for being here with us. Appreciate you being here with us. Jeff, it's an honor to have you here. Commissioners, we have the minutes that have been provided for us for November 16th and November 20th. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move.
Craig moved and Jim second. Judy, you got to be quicker.
Uh huh.
That delay. So we have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, then we're going to adjourn. Like I said, this is a special edition of county commission meeting. Back in November, we had two of our commissioners were up for reelection, Craig Pierce and Mike Caskey. Those two successfully were reelected, and so today we've got, I don't know who the master of ceremonies will be. Will it be Jay? All right, Jay. So we'll adjourn now, and we'll let Jay, you take over. We need a motion to adjourn. Motion. Craig and Mike, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're going to do them one at a time?
Yes.
Who do you get first? Commissioner Pierce, you want to come be sworn?
Sure.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for attending to the commencement of swearing-in today. I'd like to say congratulations to both of you, for your election, win your election, and for your service to the county. You also need the glass to the commissioners that I am swearing in, so awfully important to me to be here today and to do this for you. So if you will place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and read after me, I say your name. Craig, do so this way. Do so this way. With all the support and maintain the constitutional laws of the United States. Constitutional laws of the United States. And constitutional laws of North Carolina. Constitutional laws of North Carolina. I am consistent there with you. I am consistent there with you. That I will faithfully discharge. That I will faithfully discharge. To do as my office, as it is mine, as the commissioner of Rowan County, North Carolina. So, everybody.
Commissioner Caskey, please.
If you can, please. Raise your right. Read after me. I say your name.
I, Michael Caskey.
Do so this way.
Do so this way.
With all the support and maintain.
With all the support and maintain.
The constitutional laws of the United States.
Constitutional laws of the United States.
And constitutional laws of North Carolina.
Constitutional laws of North Carolina.
I am consistent there with you.
I am consistent there with you.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
And do as my office, as it is mine, as the commissioner of Rowan County, North Carolina. So, everybody. Thank you.
Oh, really? There you go.
Congratulations, Commissioners Caskey and Pierce, and it really is an honor every two years to get to have a few minutes to enjoy this process of swearing in, returning, and sometimes new commissioners to this board. It's hard to get people to run for public office, and we appreciate your service to this county and all that you've done in bringing good people to this community to work and serve. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your service to our county. It's that time of year, again, also to elect your chair and your vice chair for the upcoming year, and so I will open the floor at this time for nominations for a chair of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Craig Eds.
Second.
Move to close the nominations.
I've got a motion to close the nominations, second to move and close the nominations.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The nominations haven't been closed with one nomination. Congratulations Chairman Eds for another year as chair by acclamation. So, thank you. I will now open up the floor for nominations for vice chair of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Jim Green.
Second.
Any further nominations?
Move to close the nominations.
Have a motion to close the nominations, a second, please.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Vice Chair Green, you're elected by acclamation. Congratulations for another year. Chairman, I will now turn it back over to you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, and first of all, want to say congratulations to Craig and Mike for a job well done, and a job well done for your past eight years and now embarking on another four. Appreciate you guys on this board and the talent you bring to it, and certainly you both have a tremendous passion for this community, and it shows in everything you do, and we really do appreciate it, and look forward to working, Craig, with you next four years, well, two years at least, Mike, next two years. So, congratulations, guys. And then, Jim, we're here again, and thank you for all you do. Judy, we miss you. We miss having you here in person, but it's good to have you with an eye shot on Zoom. I certainly don't take lightly, and I know Jim feels the same way, with being in a leadership position here on the board. It's one of the most humbling things of my entire life, to, number one, be on this board, put here by the citizens, and then to continue to receive support from you all as chairman is very humbling, and I don't take that lightly, and I will always seek to represent you well and represent this community well, and so thank you. Craig, thank you. Mike, Judy, Jim, thank you, Jim.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I will be back in January.
Oh, good. That's wonderful, good. Jim?
Yeah, I would just like to echo those sentiments also and point out that I appreciate the support this board has given me in letting me serve in this capacity, but this board works together so well, and if we do disagree in a lot of things, we don't disagree publicly as much as we do privately, but you have five people with good ideas and five people that are independent thinkers, and I just appreciate all of you so much with the time that I've spent up here, and I think it's one of the reasons that we've had folks that do run for reelection, is that we appreciate each other and their opinions that come into this, and all of us have distinct interests, and I think it has really bode well for the county. So, thank you, Mr. Commissioners and Ms. Commissioner.
Well, according to the post, I think you all will be part of a group, maybe of the longest-serving commissioners together, and that says a lot for the teamwork that each of you have done. So enough of patting ourselves on the back, I'm not doing that, I just want to congratulate you guys.
Chairman, I took that as nobody wants this job.
Is that the disagreement part you were talking about?
Well, I do not take into account that they didn't have anybody that was running against them this time. I just thought that they were so strong that people were not willing to put themselves in that position.
All right, well, again, congratulations. Judy, we look forward to seeing you back in January.
Yes, sir.
If Jeff has left already, Jeff, thank you for being here, and Jay, thank you for being good counsel to us. Aaron?
Jeff, I'd like to go get it.
I do want to take just another 10 seconds and thank Aaron Church for the leadership he gives to this community. He is, he's been my only county manager, but I told him in our first meeting, he said, what do you want out of me? I said, keep me out of jail, and so far, so good, but Aaron Church is a wealth of knowledge and mostly wisdom, though, and he's a very wise counsel to this board, and Aaron, we just want to say we appreciate you very much, and we hope you're here for the rest of your career, and we thank you for what you do for this community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Jim, we don't know about you yet, so we'll see. Jim, we appreciate you, buddy. Carolyn, you as well, thanks for keeping us in line, all right? All right, let's see. We got some agenda work to do here. All right, first of all, on the consent agenda, we are going to replace item U. Item U was Tempest ALS Monitor Defibrillators. We're going to replace that with an item authorizing the chairman and manager to sign the two North Carolina Office of State Human Resources substantial equivalency monitoring short forms 2020, so that, so in essence, we're getting rid of the existing item U, and we're replacing it with that new item. Second thing is, we're going to remove from the consent agenda, item W. We're going to remove item W. Third, we're going to add to the regular agenda, under item 7A, a COVID item, Common Solutions Change Order Number One, and then we're also going to add, under the active agenda, item 7B, another COVID item, Design Solutions from Vertex Construction, a change order number one. So adding item 7A and 7B. We are deleting item number three from the regular agenda. Mr. Manager, does that sound?
Yes, sir, there's also...
Oh, there is. There's a consent item Y, which is the annual bond report that is provided by the finance department. That'll be item Y, that's been given to you, annual bond report. Does that do it?
And if the board would add to the agenda, and I just, I'd like to apologize for all the additions, hopefully, once the COVID thing is over, that will be...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
...greatly reduced. Open broadband, which is a COVID-related report on...
Why don't we move that one? Let's make that item 4A. We'll let our folks from, so environmental health won't need to sit through that. We can do environmental health first, and then we'll make this item 4A. All right, will that do it?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Mr., which item was the one from the finance department? We had, that was the same thing with the sheriff and the registered deeds. Is that the one you were talking about?
Yes.
Bond report is Y.
All right, so that's Y.
Is item Y.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Commissioners? Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
All right. Craig and Jim, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. Done minutes, we've got additions, deletions, we've approved the agenda. All right, now, do we have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
I move.
Second. Craig, Jim, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone for public comment? April, anyone?
If you have any remote participants who would like to speak during this time, you can press star nine on your phone, or use the raise your hand feature within the Zoom application.
I'd like to mention that we got the press a regular table this week, instead of sitting you at the elementary school table, so, been welcome. All right, nothing for public comment, then we've moved beyond, we deleted item three, we'll move to item four, biweekly environmental health data report. Adrian, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Honored to be here. Congratulations to you, new commissioners, or returning commissioners. Somebody's going to put that up here. Okay, as you guys can see on the screen here, so, as we discussed the first time around, it consists of the numbers of well inspections, well permitting...
Adrian, you pull that mic over in front of me.
I'm sorry. Apologize. So, like I say, as you can see, that it consists of well inspections, well permit request, permits, well permits waiting, soil site evaluations, evaluations requested, evaluations waiting, improvement permits, which are IPs, waiting and requested, existing systems waiting and requested, water samples of nitrite nitrates, and pesticide samples taken and waiting, and waiting. So, and you can see, in addition to those, do you guys want me to go deep into these numbers? I can, anyway, as you can see, that we've got additional things on top of those. We do final septic inspections, well grouting, complaints we visit, complaints waiting, and actually, on this one here, Chairman, you had asked for individual applications versus builder applications, and I added that in the blue additional info, and you can see that majority of what we get are from individuals, clients throughout the county, homeowners, individual homeowners, new homeowners that are pulling on permits. As we can identify, sometimes we don't know the builder, it may be a builder that builds two or three houses a year, that we don't know them by name, then they don't specify that I'm a builder for, they could be someone potentially purchasing a property that's owned by someone else, and we couldn't distinguish between the two, but there's, most of the builders, we know, they're consistent, they come in repeatedly. I have a newer version that I've added with the backlog on there also. It's not on yours here, but for this last two weeks, from November the 23rd through December the 4th, I actually added a backlog that gave us weeks and days of how far we are behind. As of the November 9th through November the 20th, we were four weeks, four days. As, you can't see this data on there from the 23rd through the 4th, but we were five weeks, two days, due to the holidays, two days, and partial day we worked, we've had some rain, things like that. I was on vacation for all last week, so, but I have added some improvements for next time. I'm trying to get all the information in there. Then continuing on into each inspector's, the number of site visits made, number of permits issued, this is a running tally with totals at the end of each two-week span. I try to note a holiday, holiday being the 11th, I try to note those days, and then at the bottom, there actually, you see, there's totals, I think maybe on the next screen, but there's totals to each one of those, and then we get into number of soil site evaluations each day, and the number of hours worked each day. And again, you see all those numbers, going to reiterate those S1s, S1Es, those are state reporting requirements, so that's how I get the data, so it helps me best to make this an easier process, is to turn that into those codes. And then we have a food and lodging inspection report at the bottom of this report here, and it gives actual, how many inspections we are getting completed. We have one staff right now work most of the month of November, because we have one out on maternity leave and one that took about two and a half weeks of vacation during the holidays, so we're kind of at one staff, so our inspections obviously took quite a hit there. Number of inspections hasn't changed, and I added a few more things, which are on the newest, and next time, you'll see where it shows each quarter, how many inspections happened each quarter, and I kind of actually broke it up into months on that. That's in a kind of quick nutshell.
Adrian?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you hired the consulting firm to do, get you caught up on the site visits?
That's part of a budget amendment, this for, this afternoon, in this, in y'all's meeting, to approve relocation money or amendment of money for that.
So, is that why you're still four weeks out?
It may have something to do with that. Like I say, we had to have some holidays here in the last month. You know, it's three holidays, three and a half holidays in the month of November, but yes, it could be potentially some of it.
The other thing I'm concerned about is, if you go to the addition inspector requirements, under complaints waiting, it says 55. Is that this month alone? Or is that accumulation from the last several months, or?
That is an accumulation from this year that we're trying to get to all those. We're trying to get the backlog down, focusing on the new builds, and trying to get to some of the complaints as we can. The complaints vary, and the severity or what they even may be, and we find a good portion of them aren't actually complaints.
Okay, and so, when we finally get the team of consultants that can go out and do site visits, then are there going to be more people that are able to follow up on complaints?
Should, yes, it should open our time up to do the remaining things on this list.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Adrian, what's the status of the equipment that we approved for you to purchase?
I think that's part of a budget amendment as well.
Today?
Today, I believe so.
This complaints waiting, is that just cleaning up some of the old mess we've talked about, or is that, is that, if we were talking about this a year, if we're talking about this a year from now, I mean, if you all were coming in every two weeks for the next year, is this something that is a typical item that you have to deal with, or is this really cleaning up kind of the mess we've been in?
No, no, this is a typical item. This is a neighbor complaining on the other neighbor. From anything, from trash, we would get those, we try to refer those on out, but since we have an online application for complaints, we get those and try to move those on out, but it's for failing septic systems, well issues, bed in a motel somewhere, it's all coming in through that, and those fall in that complaint range, so this would be something that's never ending.
So, that's, that's both food and lodging then, and septic? Or just site visits?
We don't get as many of those complaints, but it does fall in that range, yes.
Okay.
We don't get as many food and lodging complaints, one or two a month, maybe. Most of it's, my neighbors got failing septic, or my neighbors running their gutters onto our property, and we go out to them, and I'd say somewhere between 25 and 33% of those are unjustified, but we'll have to go visit to make sure. But a lot of it here lately has been rainwater runoff that, you used the magic word, sewage, and then got us.
What's your, what's your backlog number right now, as far as, I think, last time we met, we were looking at about five and a half weeks?
It's five, it's four weeks, four days, as of this reporting, as of today, it was five weeks, two days. We only have 37 applications as of today, so we can get some time, and the weather cooperates, then we can try to cut down on that.
So, Aaron is the consultant that we approved, seemed like that was a month ago, wasn't it? Is that being held up by our budget action today?
I have not seen a contract for consultant to provide those services.
Again, we're kind of in a bad spot here, because we don't dictate what goes on there, but how can we coordinate the county manager and health director?
Most of it's, my neighbors got failing septic, or my neighbors running their gutters onto our property, and, and we go out to them, and I'd say somewhere between 25 and 33% of those are unjustified, but we'll have to go visit to make sure. But a lot of it here lately has been rainwater runoff that, you use the magic word of sewage, and then got us.
What's your, what's your backlog number right now, as far as, I think last time we met, we were looking at about five and a half weeks?
It is five, it's four weeks, four days, as of this reporting, as of today, it was five weeks, two days. We only have 37 applications as of today, so we can get some time and the weather cooperates, then we can try to cut down on that.
So Aaron is the consultant that we approved, seemed like that was a month ago, wasn't it? Is that being held up by our budget action today?
I have not seen a contract for consultant to provide those services.
Again, we're kind of in a bad spot here because we don't dictate what goes on there, but how can we coordinate the county manager and health directors that something you guys can get together on this week, or whenever?
Sure, so I know the BA, we've worked with the company before, that they did the last 20 lots, and it's taken this, this while, this time because we had to get quotes, we got about six quotes, four of them, five, four or five of them said they couldn't do the work and they did not, or didn't respond. So luckily, this company that we worked with before did respond and said that they could do it, we submitted to the BA, I believe, November 20th, after we got all the quotes, and then once it's passed, we can simply get a contract, once it's passed, we can have a contract done tomorrow.
Who approves that, is that your board?
I approve it. I approve all contracts.
So, when do you think that'll be approved and then?
Tomorrow. Yeah, as long, we're just, we just got to wait for this part, and then, once it's approved, I'll check, I'll call, sometimes I'll call Carolyn to see if certain things were approved, and then once I hear back it's been approved, we can get that contract up and going.
Any other questions for Adrian and Nina? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you. All right, open broadband, Kent. Looking forward to this day?
Good afternoon all, Merry Christmas. First, I would like to let you know a little bit of something about what you all did was really the first in the whole state, and that is to identify these funds for broadband. Ever since you did that, we've had counties come in out of the woodwork saying, how do they do that? And the county should be very proud of the action you took to take these funds and make them usable for broadband for these rural areas. I even have counties, last week, they're still reaching out to me saying, how did Rowan County do this? So residents should be very proud of the way you've, you've done this, and it's really going to accomplish a lot. So what I'm going to do today is give you an update on where we're at, things are moving right along, we're right on target. So, do I click this, or does it go? There we go. So here's the update of what's, what's all been happening since we last talked, we have an agreement on, for our main tower in Statesville Boulevard, it's the WSTP old radio tower in Statesville. We have full access to that tower, it's no longer used as a broadcast tower, and that is going to be our, our main tower. The reason for that is that it's centrally located, and it's got a lot of fiber access to it, and I can reach just about any of the other towers in the county from there. We have an agreement for a temporary cable drop to get to there, and then we're already working on fiber access to that, to that tower. That means we will have a gigabit plus to that tower, capable of doing more than a gigabit to that tower. The future is planned to go up to 10 gigabits, which is, it's really quite, quite fast. And it will give us, we can do 10 gigabits wireless, it's very limited as far as distance, but some of the maps I'll show you where we're going to be able to do some, some gigabit service. We're doing line of sight and non-line of sight, what they call CBRS, it will not be a test. Non-line of sight is like an LTE technology, it is really where a lot of, it gives us the ability to get to places that are behind trees and just kind of hidden. We can't go through dirt, but we can go through trees. And so the tower locations that we're using were very high up, will be able to get to a lot of people. Mostly the equipment is presently in hand, which, which is really a good thing because there's been a lot of COVID delays with getting equipment, especially from China, and we're trying to specify equipment coming from Israel and some of the other countries that are not so COVID-bound. More CPE, that's customer premise equipment, in other words, the antennas that go onto the homes are being purchased as we speak. We're avoiding a lot of the COVID supply problems by choosing the right avenues. Not a lot of other people are able to say that. We have a temporary second location at the place called The Springs, which is right on High Rock Lake, a very high place. They've been very cooperative for us to be able to send this signal out to almost all of eastern Rowan County from that location, you'll see maps in that in just a second.
So what is at The Springs, is there a tower there, are you putting one there?
Both. So the first location we're going to, and it's, I'll cover this as well, but we're going to put a temporary short tower, it's 600 feet above Lake, High Rock Lake, and so we're going to put a temporary short tower just to get signal in. And the meanwhile that we're working on is putting in a permanent pole at that location, it's at their clubhouse. But they also have a fire tower a little bit further up the road too, that they're allowing access to that land. And so we will be able to use both of those locations, but we want to get somebody up and running before the end of the year. So we're going to do a temporary location until we can get a pole put in properly, and then we'll just migrate over to that. We have an agreement with two other towers already in place, one of them's on Jake Alexander, the WSAT site, one of their towers is not being used, we've got an agreement with that. We also have an agreement with one of the towers out at Young's Mountain, which has got huge coverage. The tower climbers are ready to go, we're anticipating climbing towers next week, starting to put up wireless point-to-point radios. We have first beta testers already lined up in eastern part of this, of the county. The phase two tower agreement, Young's Mountain is already, is moving quickly along, so. This is the first site, this is the tower on Statesville, it's centrally located, lots of fiber access there, I mean, they're just right out of the street, it's real easy access for us to get to. We are creating, we are, we are buying licensed links to other towers. What that means is that we get better bandwidth, and we are, we won't have any chance of interference because it's a licensed, FCC licensed link. This is the best way to get out to these other towers. The second site is The Springs and High Rock Lake, it's easy access, easy deploy, fantastic coverage. The neighbors there are very cooperative, they're allowing us to come in and use some of their land to be able to put up these towers. It's easy for expansion to the fire tower, you'll see pictures of these, and like I mentioned before, it's a temporary tower, it's actually going to be used to tripod with a mast on it, and the permanent is to come. So this is the view from, from their clubhouse, and that's all of High Rock Lake, so on the left part is Rowan County, on the right is Davidson, but our antennas are going to be, you see a fence to the far left, our antenna's going to be around that corner and facing right into all of Rowan County, and you'll see a coverage map coming up. So to provide this link, we're going from the Statesville Tower, Statesville Boulevard Tower, out to the High Rock Lake, and here's a map that I've created that'll show us the link, you can see how high the, the Springs is, it's, it's that big blip off to the right-hand side, and this is using a licensed link, and we're anticipating 1.2 gigabits up and down out of that link to that location. So that's a full gig going out 26 kilometers, which is what, 14 miles, 12 miles? Did I do my math right? Here is the coverage that, and it doesn't show up on the projector very well, I apologize for that, but this is the anticipated coverage for LTE. Our goal is to make sure we're covering the eastern part of, of the county, and we are doing this very well. There's a couple of dead zones in there, we can fill that in as we go, but this one site right here, especially where it says High Rock and that, that red dot, and south, that's the main part of Morgan, Morgan Ridge, I think is, is what it's called, that's Morgan Ridge right there, and we're covering it very nicely, very nicely, and we can go further out into the county as well, and we're almost all the way to Granite Quarry, but we're going to concentrate mainly on that area just south of where it says High Rock, and that's where some of our beta testers are already lined up, ready to go. This is the fire tower in case we need it, it gives us a little bit more range if we need it. If we, we're also given the ability to build a tower next to it in case we don't feel like we could use this tower. So we've got multiple tower sites already in agreement. Our equipment is coming in, we've got rolls of cable, we've got antennas coming in, they're all ready to be configured and start, start getting them up onto the towers. Here's one of the additional towers, this is a 250-foot tower on Jake Alexander, we can use this to fulfill in, we've already got the signed agreement for it, and, and then this is the lake out to Young's Mountain, and again, 1.2 gigabits up and down with a licensed link. And the Young's Mountain's going to be very key, we've had a number of businesses specifically in far southwestern Rowan County already reaching out to us, asking for service. It's, it's amazing how many people come out of the woodwork when you start mentioning broadband. This is the anticipated coverage of, of LTE off of Young's Mountain, and I think I've got the next one, there we go, there, this is the combined coverage of those two towers, and a very poor drawing, I'm not very good at art, a very poor drawing of the outline of Rowan County. So this gives us pretty decent coverage off of just two towers, just to start off with. And these two towers will give a minimum of 25 megs down, and we anticipate many people will be able to get 100 megs or better, and actually be competitive with spectrum for the areas that don't even have spectrum.
So, on the south end, that's the county, I assume, on the south end where there's the dark green, that's still a little spotty?
It's a little spotty, but we have other towers down there, I'm just concentrating on these two, let's get these done. This is, this is our main, our main goal, number one, was to get a Morgan Ridge area, and number two was to get Scotch Irish, and these cover those two areas, but we have every, all the plans to fill in all the other areas, absolutely. Now, one thing we, I didn't have as part of my presentation is the tier levels that are going on within the counties. We will absolutely apply for every grant available for Rowan County. And what's really nice is that even the areas that we have, are starting to cover, we'll be able to apply for state grants as well because it's not in the FCC database. So we will, the areas that are, are gray and aren't being covered, we can utilize state grants to fill in those areas. And we're, you're number one in our list to, to apply for those state grants, and that will start coming up in the next couple of months.
So that program, is tier one closed now, is, is that program paused, or what's going on with that stuff?
It's, well, for last year, the governor took the funding away and put it elsewhere, I don't know where he put it. But my understanding is that there's already $15 million budgeted, and there may be significantly more money coming, and that money is budgeted and will not go away. So the chances of Rowan County getting some of that is pretty good, real good, we feel very confident in that.
And that's a program where the county is not eligible for those grants, that's private, it's a private sector grant, so you would have to apply for it.
Correct, we have to apply for it, but we also have to match it, so we have to make sure we have enough credit or, or dollars in the bank to be able to match the funding that we're applying for. And so the county is not even involved in that part at all, there's, there's nothing you need to do.
I'd be interested in knowing Jay and Randy, I know Randy's lurking somewhere, if we can incent that at all. I'm not asking for any answer today, but Randy and Jay, just kind of make a note of that, see if that's something we can incent.
There's one thing that we will come to the county for, and that is a letter of support as part of our submission. Other than that, you know, whatever else you can do to talk to your public officials, that's a good thing, to keep them up to date and, and just really inform them of what's going on. We're reaching out as well to all the public officials of the areas that we're submitting to, but it certainly doesn't hurt to have the county reaching out as well.
So Kent, are you talking about both state legislators and the governor's office?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else?
I think that's, that will really, I think that'll, that'll do it for you.
Okay.
If I do know of anybody else, I'll reach out to you all and let you know, but as of right now, we have already won grants through this, it's called the great grant, we've already won grant dollars for other counties, and so we're pretty familiar with the process. If the process changes in any way, we'll keep informed, but we'll be full bore, full bore on, on making that happen.
Kent?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Could you, could you, and I'm not, I'm not trying to tie you down to time, but can you just give us some sort of a timeframe that you think you're looking at with, with getting started here with this?
Oh, definitely. We still anticipate having some people online by the end of the year, in...
Of which, the 2000?
2020, this month. We anticipate having somebody, a few people up online by the end of this month.
And that's the beta group you're talking about?
That's the beta group, and they're mainly down in, down towards the lake and the river, and, but they're in our coverage area over there, and we've got about three or four that are, we've been talking to just to get that off the ground. But it's always been our goal to get somebody online by the end of the year, and so far, we're, we're right on target. Now, the rest of it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, have you got anybody up in Scotch Irish that's going to be a beta tester?
Yes. We have not been pushing Scotch Irish as much because that's part of phase two, though we've been working on it, we've been working on it, and, but we wanted to get phase one, which was Morgan Ridge, want to absolutely nail that one. So, phase two with Young's Mountain will come right after the first of the year, I'd say by springtime we'll have people up and running.
Okay.
Just make a mental note, Kent, we've got some people that were part of that broadband task force that are in Scotch Irish, so as you begin beta testing up there, maybe you can get with Randy and get their names, and I'm sure they're...
Already talking to them and their neighbors.
Okay.
And we're also talking to a number of people down near Mount Ula, they've been reaching out to me, so, and it looks like we're going to have some pretty good coverage in the Mount Ula.
I'm really glad to hear that, Kent, because St. Luke's Lutheran Church has applied to be a disaster housing area, so hopefully that's going to go through in the next couple of months, so that, that broadband will be very, very useful.
If you could share that location with me, I want to make sure that we get that taken care of as a top priority.
Okay.
I can tell you that we have a couple of people that were serving right now just north of Mount Ula via a specialized LTE service, so we do have customers in Rowan County already, but they're not on our standard network. But at least they're getting some service better than their three-meg DSL. I think I've got one more, do I have, oh, I just want to thank you all for the support you've given, we are doing our best to do good for the citizens of Rowan County. We think that we're right on target, we're right, meeting our deadlines, meeting our financial deadlines as well, and I, I think it could be very soon that a lot of people are going to start getting service, and by the way, we are hiring, so if we know people that are good in installation of, of networking equipment or the like, we'd like to talk to them, and we're also looking for a new regional manager as well, we're expanding to our regional manager footprint. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. You've got my contact information if something comes up, and I would be happy to answer them very promptly.
All right, Kent.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kent. All right, item five from, is this coming from Randy or from you, Aaron?
Aaron. So this is an update on the small business grant application. I just got these numbers this morning, there's likely going to be lots of changes, I don't, I don't know how much I would read into them. Also, at the end of the presentation, which the presentation is very short, is the third revised program that I'm requesting the board adopt, which will, will help along the grant process. We're no longer accepting applications, applications were accepted between November 23rd and December 4th. There were 210... There were 210 electronic submissions, including duplicates. There were 16 paper in-person submissions. So this is the information that is an overall view of what has came in, and they're still working on this. But currently, there's 16 businesses that are eligible and in progress, that have turned in all their paperwork. And the next step will be for the attorney, county attorney and the attorney working for McGill and Associates to verify those 16 meet the criteria. And then the checks will be mailed out. There's an additional 36 applications where they're waiting for additional documentation. There's 14 that are ineligible. There are 58 who they need to contact or they need to receive. They need to contact McGill, and McGill needs to contact them and start the documentation process. Ineligible, there are 68,500, which is 18 applicants, that are ineligible based on the way they filled out the application. And to follow up with, there are two applicants. So if you take all that information and look at it, you're looking at $336,000 worth of potential eligible grants and maybe some of the 68,500, which is the 18 application count under ineligible low score. The score is related to what they checked on the application online or either the paper copy. So that is all I have as far as the statistics go. The?
Can you explain the difference between awaiting further docs, ineligible verified and ineligible low score?
So ineligible verified may be someone that, you know, based on the type of business they are or based on where the business is at. You know, we've had applications from out of state. You know, they are definitely not qualified. There are some businesses that were deemed essential. They're definitely not qualified. So that's what the ineligible verified is. They verified that. Ineligible low score may be a company that was, based on the way the program was written, they are currently ineligible because they filled out the application wrong, but they may actually be eligible. There may have been a topographical error. They may have, you know, put the wrong answer on there inadvertently. You know, they may have said, and this is just something I'm making up, but they could have said they had 26 employees when they only have one. So does that answer your question? So the changes to the?
Aaron, before you go?
Sure.
This is, follow up with 3,500, and then there's two. But isn't 3,500 the minimum?
It is. That's an error. To follow up with are the ones they received just this morning because they got them late Friday afternoon, McGill and Associates. And this is already, these statistics are already, have already changed. So this is what it was this morning, and it's changing, you know, by the hour.
Are you telling us, Aaron, that if everybody gets their tax returns in or whatever the requirement is here that they're missing, if we follow up with all of these folks, we could be paying out $336,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And part of the 68.5?
Possibly some of the 68.5. The 48,000 are, they are absolutely 100% not eligible. So the changes to the grant program, the first change is on page 1C, and everyone should have a red line copy of that, and it's what I emailed out last night. McGill and Associates, and under C funding is to add the sentence, McGill and Associates has the discretion to define and determine what constitutes a completed application if there are technical errors or mistakes that are not substantial. Page two, and here's really the big one. I mean, it's not that, it's not a substantial change. It's just a technical change based on our understanding of what the Secretary of State ID is. But under B requirements, the prior one said a Secretary of State ID is required, and we're adding unless the business is a sole proprietor that does not operate under an assumed name. If the sole proprietor currently operates under assumed name without a Secretary of State ID, they must file a certificate of assumed business name at the Rowan County Register of Deeds. A copy of the recorded form and receipt can be substituted for the requirement of the Secretary of ID. So Secretary of State ID. So if they're operating under their name, they won't need this or an ID. If they're operating under an assumed name, since they may not get the ID before the deadline for us to write the checks, you know, it's asking to accept just a copy that they went and recorded, an assumed business name. The third page, change is D under documentation. Number seven goes back to the Secretary of State identification number. It just says, with the exceptions that I just stated. Additional guidelines, first sentence reads, and here is one change that I'll ask the board if they approve this as adopted. The sentence where it says, it starts in red, respond to McGill and Associates for, to begin not being, begin providing information in section D. So what this does is says that, you know, they have three business days to respond to McGill and Associates to begin providing information in section D versus having to have all the information provided. That will make the, you know, the 58 who need, you know, to get the additional documents in eligible. And then the next sentence is all required information must be received no later than December 11th at 5:00 PM. And then there's another change. It says McGill and Associates shall have the discretion to make exceptions if the application was not completed correctly due to technical problems. And Randy, you had one other thing you wanted to point out?
I think it was just here you had a red line, but it was just a minor typo filed for bankruptcy. That's all I had.
What was it?
6A. It was just a red line here where it says the business has filed for bankruptcy anytime within the last three years. I think that was just a correction. That's all.
Yeah, oh yeah, sorry. I did make that change too. That was a grammatical change. So the, all these changes are just to, you know, the application deadline is over, so nobody can submit. We're not, we are changing the rules after they've been submitted, but we're not changing the rules during the middle of the application process because they're all in and nobody else can submit. So, but the rules are mainly being changed because the rules weren't written well in the first place. So I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Aaron, I've had more than four or five people contact me that there's some irregularities in the application process. Some people filled it out, immediately got a response that their application was dated and stamped, and would be further contact or information. Other people said, I sent it in three days. Go ahead and run it work. And that was before we had a contact number from McGill. So I'm kind of concerned that some of these applications may not be able to be, make the timeline because they were late getting started with the information that was required.
So Randy, can you speak to the verification process that the applicant, how, what steps they have to do to ensure we have their email address?
Yes, sir. And I have talked with a few applicants as well. And so what would happen in the electronic process is they would submit, it was taking on average six to 10 minutes for each applicant to prepare their application. The e-signature portion sends an email back to them that makes sure that from the electronic submission, we have an email contact. There were at least two cases where they had submitted an application and their information that came back to click the link to verify their email address and signature had gone to their junk email. We still do see that on the back end and actually had a conversation with one applicant today to confirm that, that they did actually go through. So anyone that's had a question that has called, we have been able to work through with them, both on the electronic form and gave an offering of the paper form. So I don't know that there's any outstanding individuals that had called in to the county manager's office or emailed back to the COVID-19 email address that haven't been addressed and didn't find that their application had been submitted, and it was just that last part where they have to verify with that link.
Well, one of the reasons I brought this up is you said that there were some duplicated applications. I told them if they didn't get a response, apply again. I said, maybe your information was incorrect. And then I was a little bit taken back when one of them said, well, the first time I did it, I scored 100. I said, the second time I did it, I scored 80. I'm not sure what's going on there.
Well, 80 is not good.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
So yeah, if anybody, if you're just having to call me or Randy, we'll look up on the list and we'll talk to McGill to make sure that their application got in. They still, everyone still has till the 11th. And we're not trying to be, you know, put a lot of pressure on the businesses to get it in by the 11th, but we've got, we got to get the checks written. So that, you know, everyone still has five additional days to get their documentation in. And if the board is okay with approving this as presented, just with the one additional change that was mentioned, that changes the word being to begin.
All right, if there's not any other questions?
You need a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, motion to approve the updates on the COVID-19 small business grant.
So moved.
All right, Craig and Jim, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Aaron. I tell you, when we began talking about this, Aaron just grabbed it and ran with it. And I know he's, he's pretty technically minded, but I know Randy is the magician behind the curtain. So Randy, I know you're there. Thank you for all your good work on this. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number six, the CRF funds update. I'd like to start that by saying that Jim has handed out one document, and he's also going to give you a verbal update on what we're going to call the Health Department grant funds, and he'll give you the amount. But I just want to remind all the commissioners, I've talked to the directors, that we have a lot of programs that have been implemented in the last six months. But those programs are going to end December 30th. The county will not have, I mean, we cannot financially, without doing a really big budget amendment, continue to do the things that we've been doing with this money. Now, there, you know, the United States Congress and the United States Senate, as I understand it, there's still maybe an additional stimulus bill or relief package passed, but as of this morning, when I look, there has not been one. So what that means is on December 31st, a lot of the programs and things we've put into place are going to end. And we knew that when we put them in place. The community paramedic program will end on December 31st. And that's the program to where we had four paramedics that would go out and provide assistance to those who had tested positive for COVID-19. The testing that we're currently doing, particularly last, or in October, we spent $173,000 on testing through Mako. Like I said, this money is going to be gone. However, one of the things that could happen in a potential relief bill passed by the US House and Senate is there could be an extension to expend the funds, but we've already, we've already spent most of these funds. So, you know, spending $173,000 a month on testing is not something that is sustainable without additional stimulus. Now, when Jim tells you about the numbers, that Health Department has some grant funding that is available for a longer timeline. Even the grant money they have, $178,000 a month for testing is not sustainable. So I spoke with the Health Director last week, and we had a meeting. I've spoken, I think with each commissioner, as I've been able to, and particularly our commissioner that represents the, that is on the Health Board. And there's some decisions that the Health Board need to make and examine, you know, policy decisions on how their grant funding will be spent. But I just wanted the board to be aware that the positions we've added, you know, all the different stuff we've been doing is going to stop on December 31st unless there's a stimulus bill. The Health Department does have some grant money that Jim's going to share with you, but it is not enough to continue doing what we're doing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jim to go over both. So we're going to talk about CRF, county as a whole, and then CRF Health Department.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. What you're looking at is the summary for the CRF dollars for the county as a whole through Friday of last week, December 4th. We have spent $3,935,717. Original budget was $5,319,455. So we have $1,383,738 still to spend this month. As you can see, we believe we're going to spend that. We have contracts for construction of $690,000. We still plan on spending an additional $144,000 in PPE, $34,000 in Narcan purchasing, $111,000 in testing, dedicated employee expense, roughly $178,000. Technology, $241,000. And then the small business grants, which we talked about a little bit ago, we are still estimating a $385,000, though we do have updated numbers of 336, but we still have the $35,000. the $35,000 that would pay McGill, so we'll be close to that 385, plus the others that still may come through. So with all that, we would spend in the month of December, $1,784,255, which would make it look like we spent $400,000 beyond the budget. Now, of course, roughly a million of that is dedicated employee expenses that are already budgeted, but because of the way the law works, we are able to use those funds to offset the CRF funds we received. Anybody have any questions or want to get into any details?
Does, so I guess a later agenda item, but is the possible money for the temperature tunnels in here, in this?
No, sir.
So this is our last meeting of the year.
Maybe.
Last scheduled meeting for the year, so we may need to do a special call meeting to make some final decisions.
I really, I really hope that there's some type of movement on the federal level. It may take some of the pressure off, but if not, there may be a need to do that.
And, oh, Mr. Chairman, and what I can do, if Mr. Church is okay with it, each Monday, I can update the summary sheet and send it out to the board, so at least y'all are keep, you see where we're at each week.
All right, we don't need to take any action on that. Moving on to item seven. Jim, you want, this is under Finance, who's going to talk about this?
Pete.
Oh, Pete, I'm sorry.
And then Randy is available.
Mr. Vogel.
Pete, you're going to handle seven, seven A and seven B?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got three different items here. The original one, seven, seven, I guess, is the temperature tunnel. We took bids for the temperature tunnel, those were originally put out bid on November 4th. We only had one manufacturer that responded of the temperature tunnels. We did contact two others that we found that could produce something similar. So we didn't open, couldn't open bids on the 5th, immediately re-advertised it within the two weeks, and then were able to open still the one bid that we received on November 17. That one bid that we received, you have, I'm sure you have it in your package, was from Integro, who is actually here in Salisbury. That bid was for three of these temperature tunnels. The total cost was $97,500. As I understand, there may be interest in only two of them, so it's confirmed with Integro. It's a simple math thing, they priced them per unit, so two thirds of that would be the $65,000. So that's what I have on that piece.
If I could just, do one question Commissioner Kaski asked about if it was in here, it is not, but there's $25,000 in contingency in the contract with Vertex and $10,000 in the contingency with the contract with Salcoa, however, we have change orders that don't necessarily have to be approved, that could go towards a tunnel. If they were approved, then you've got a little over $11,000, $12,000 in the contingencies in these two contracts, you know, Contract One and Contract Two. If we didn't approve these change orders coming up, you would have approximately $35,000 that could go towards the temperature tunnels.
That's good.
So these have to be purchased, paid for, and installed by the end of the year?
That was the question that I knew was going to come up. The answer originally was yes. I've talked to Randy Kress some about, he has a potential alternate way to handle that because the answer at this point is no, they can't be.
You're saying they don't have to be?
Look, I'll let Randy speak to that.
Yes, Pete, thank you. Yeah, there was guidance given by NC Pro and also Federal for items that if they're approved, we could work with NC Pro, which is the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office, for items that would be ordered, but due to supply chain reasons, they can't be in by December 30th. So what we would do if this was approved is work with Integro and NC Pro to verify if they would be able to meet that requirement. We would need to understand from Integro, you know, what their, if it's a supply chain issue, which is I think what we heard originally with them getting the components to make the units. And if that's the case, you, they would have to sign and agree to that, that it's a supply chain issue, and then that extends the date for 90 days, but that has to be, we have to take possession of it and it has to be invoiced and installed within that 90-day window past December 30th.
Thank you.
And I'll put some words in Integro's mouth. They were still telling us as we took the bid on 11/17, that if we got approval for it, like within a week, maybe two weeks, that they could still get it in installed by December 30th. So that 90 days that Randy has mentioned, sounds like that should be, should be doable.
Pete, is the 97.5, does that include the installation of the unit?
That's everything, and that's for three.
Okay.
And I think there's only two.
Correct.
Where is the third one?
Third one was in the lower level, the basement area of the jailhouse, of the Justice Center, I'm sorry, where they're bringing people into the Sallyport area.
You know, I don't know how else to bring this up. I've had information from someone there in that office that said they could really just do with one. Have you heard that?
The three is what was requested to our office from folks at the Justice Center.
It isn't the letter we got, it only says two.
I know.
There originally four, there was a fourth one at DSS, but that one was jettisoned early on, and the remaining three were what we were asked to put on the drawings.
All three of them in the courthouse?
In the Justice Center. They were, so the one that's in the Sallyport area underneath, that's probably not the right time, but underneath where they bring prisoners in, that's one that we've already heard could probably be done away with. The two that are being requested right now, there's one at the main entrance that's off of Liberty Street, and then the other one is the main entrance off of Main Street. So those are the two areas. Right now, during COVID, the Main Street entrance has been closed off. So would there be some logic that says that maybe they don't need that one? I'll leave that to your wisdom.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on this, and I may be by myself, and that's okay if I am, but this is a lot of money to spend since there's supposedly a vaccine coming out here in a short period of time that's going to eliminate our reasoning behind purchasing these things. And then once we bought them, somebody's going to have to man them, and then there's maintenance on it that you told us has to be done every year that's quite expensive.
Well, we were told, yes.
So I'm trying to justify this kind of expenditure for a short period of time and then possibly never be used anymore, once this COVID situation has corrected itself. So I got a little, I got a little angst on trying to spend this kind of money on something that's only going to be around for a little time.
I'm with you, Commissioner Pierce, and I'm going to offer up maybe a, word's leaving me now. We did get a letter from Judge Wagner, and it said, "The proposed addition of the temperature tunnels in our facility was part, was a key component to our jury resumption plan, which was submitted to and approved by the Administrative Office of the Courts in November." So I get that, this was part of their plan, but I'm, I don't, I think three's too many. I know that they were, I know that we've talked about two, but I understand one may work. So I'd make a motion that we approve funding for one.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, just trying to put kind of a framework around COVID. COVID's never going away. COVID will be here with us for years and years and years to come. Now, I don't like spending any more money, any of you, but from the perspective of not needing it after the vaccine comes out, I would really caution us on that because, two reasons. Number one is that all the people that want to get vaccinated won't be able to get vaccinated until probably the end of August. And number two is there's a growing number of people that will not get vaccinated. They have just flat out said, no, we're not doing that. The other thing, too, is that with the vaccine is, it sounds like it's going to have to be re-administered every three years. So I just want to put that out there as a point of information as we continue to discuss this issue.
Thank you, Judy.
Mr. Chairman, where I'm coming from is this is not a COVID detector. This is just a temperature tunnel that's going to take your temperature, which, you know, we could be doing that right now manually when they come through the metal detector. So I mean, this is just an awful expensive thing to put in place that's got to be maintained and manned, so it's going to be additional monies from now and forever, as long as we use it. I just, you know, I just think we're getting the cart before the horse here. Like I said, it's, it's not going to detect the disease, it's just going to tell you it's running a temperature.
How many metal detectors does they have in that building?
They have two. Well, they have two at the entrances, and then there's the one in the Sallyport area, too. We match these temperature tunnels with where they have metal detectors.
It used to be they only had one metal detector in the back, if my understanding is correct.
They have two, they have two entrances, one in the old courthouse along the buildings entrance, and their local man, I bet, is nine more along the front, closed every area. But they usually have two entrances, they can handle deputies and, you know, the deck.
And they do have deputies with manual temperature scanners at those locations.
At this point?
At this point, they do. Of the other one.
Once we put these things in, too, there are going to be officers there, aren't there?
There will be officers there, yeah. These tunnels will not eliminate the need for someone to be manning that station.
That's my problem also, is that we're not eliminating anything by using these, we're just adding expense to the county.
Well, I think that it probably, you're not going to need as much manpower if they're going to go through
No.
Through the tunnel, and then you go through the normal procedures. You'd have to have someone there to do the temperature.
No.
But I think I agree with Craig and Greg. Now, I don't know how long we're going to use these, but I mean, we did get the letter from Judge Wagner and Judge Brown, who said, stated that the COVID-19 Committee, which is the Sheriff, the Clerk Court, and magistrate, the courthouse, security officers, Ryan County Health Department Representative, Trial Corps Administrator, the Ryan County Facilities Manager, were all joining in on this letter, asking for two, but then Greg has information that one would work, so I mean, I would probably support one then. Because we're not there every day, so those are the folks that are there working that are asking for it. But I agree with Craig, I don't know what the long term, you know, if we just get one and then we use it for a year, and never use it again, or, I don't know, maybe they'll find in the next, when COVID-20 comes along, use it then.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a second on your motion?
I made a motion that we provide one.
Yes, do you need a second?
If you'd like to provide one.
Yes, I will second that.
Is, are the contingency monies cover the second, or is it, was that only 12,000 available?
We would probably need to talk about the change orders that are presented.
Really, we're talking about being out of COVID money to pay for two of these at best. And so that would be taxpayer money that we're going to have to do with that.
I don't know about COVID money. Out of Phase One, Phase Two is all that I know. And I don't know that this Phase Three was, yeah, it was supposed to be part of the Phase Two as well. So I can't speak to the rest of the pot.
Yeah, the initial capital cost, if the board elected to buy, you know, however many that are bought, what we would do is adjust these numbers and include the temperature tunnel, but it would reduce the amount of money that the county gets reimbursed for employee expenses. So technically, it wouldn't be county property tax money. Now, if there's a maintenance charge going forward, or, you know, a calibration charge or something like that, that would be county money.
Let's, can we do this, can we table that to the end of this meeting? Let's move on.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the change order is going to cost, so I can see how much money that's going to be before I decide to vote.
Yeah, let's table this, let's move on. I'm not a Roberts Rules expert. Do I need, do I need other motions to table it?
Just say one minute.
To later in the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, just move the table to later in the meeting and take a second.
A second. All right, second, Craig, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. All right, our litter report from Caleb.
We got seven A and B.
Seven A and B, I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry.
I got excited.
All right, so seven A and B are the two change orders that are current on the COVID projects, Phase One, Phase Two. Phase One is the COVID Common Solutions, and that's a, you should have AIAG 701 that has Salcoa's name on it. Up top left, you should see COVID-19 Common Solutions. That one is for change requests one, two, three, four, and five. Some of these are adds, some of these are credits. These come from additional touch-free faucet installations that were requested, found in all the lives in the project throughout these multiple otherwise in the project throughout these multiple facilities. This, this project has been one of a, a lot of flexibility, as, as you even saw the gentleman that was here earlier from South Cola installing the signs out in the hallway, part of this project. So, and then actually, we had a, a good size credit in here, as we were able to find a better deal on paper towel dispensers, and able to pull out a lot of the mixing valves that had been specified in where they weren't needed or could not be installed. So all total, we had a contingency of ten thousand, and we can reduce that contingency by the total net ask here, which was five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and five cents. So we still have a remaining contingency in Phase One of four thousand one thirty-seven and ninety-five. So with that, the contract sum was four forty-one, four eighty-five, remains four forty-one, four eighty-five. So that's change order one for Common Solutions. And if you flip over to change order one for Design Solutions.
Let's, uh, let's vote on that one real quick. Motion to approve this item seven A, which is Common Solutions, change order number one. Craig, motion?
Second.
Judy, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving over to the Design Solutions, same thing, these are some, so in, in Design Solutions, the alternate for the cubicles was not able to be accepted, so when the cubicles came out, we had to make a few minor adjustments in some of the, like the estate office, and some other areas, and the Justice Center, where we're putting shelves, where we're putting desks, things like that, created a, a need for a couple of more partition walls to be built in there. Criminal Division requested that they, that they have a twenty-four inch deep countertop, and they were the eighteen, which was on the plans. And, oh, and I forgot, number three, Landis Sheriff's Office asked for adjustment, well, some adjustments for no cubicles in there as well. That one actually created a need for a few more partition walls. We had a contingency of twenty-five thousand in this budget, asking for the reduction of seventeen thousand one eighty-one, and this one, which gives us a remaining contingency price of seven thousand eight hundred and nineteen. Contract sum is five hundred and seventy and twenty-seven dollars, and still remains at five hundred and seventy thousand twenty-seven.
All right, any questions for Pete on this change order? All right, we have a motion to approve Design Solutions, change order number one, which is item seven B.
So moved.
All right, Judy, motion?
Thank you.
Second, any other discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
I do have one more item I was asked to bring up, since this may be the last meeting of the year for the commissioners. We have a little bit of contingency money left over in both of these pots. As we're working toward this hard deadline of December thirtieth, I was, it was suggested that I recommend to you that you allow the county manager to approve any additional minor changes that remain under the contingency money between now and December thirty.
In order for us not to have-
A special call meeting, so long as we don't change the contract amount.
And that's, what is that, fifty thousand total?
No, no, the, the Phase One, and, and they're handled separately. Phase One, we only have four thousand one thirty-seven leftover in contingency money, and Phase Two was seven thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. So, but that, that would also mean if you're wanting to move forward with this temperature tunnel, it would be wise for you to do that as a true change order to the contract, and not try to put it into a contingency, since it's not there.
So you're talking about contingency balance of seventy-eight hundred dollars?
Yes, sir, in Phase Two. Phase One still has a contingency balance of forty-one thirty-seven. On the AIA form right here, I'll show you where it is.
What, what page is it?
So e, either the ones that have AIA form up here at the top, if you'll go down to the middle right here, that, that last piece of the solid paragraph, that'll tell you where, where we stand.
All right, so then I'd make a motion that we give the county manager authority to make changes through the end of the year on the contingency fees in Phase One and Two. Is that, make, make muster here. All right, that's a motion.
Second.
Craig, second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thanks. Anything else, Pete?
Unless you wanted to talk about the temperature tunnels again.
Well, I tell you what, we have a motion on the floor for the temperature tunnels to purchase one, so I maintain that motion. Judy, there's a second, so let's go ahead and disperse with this.
So what's, so how much is the one that just-
Who's divided?
One should be thirty-five thousand or something like that. Thirty-three, five.
Per, correct, yeah.
And this money's just going to come out of the, it's going to just reduce the reimbursement of the county employees, Mike?
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, Pete, we'll go with one.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thanks, bud.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, our litter, litter report, this is from Caleb Sinclair, Director of Rowan County Environmental Management. Staff removed sixty-six hundred and thirty-five pounds of roadside debris during the two-week period beginning Monday, November second, through Friday, November thirteenth. I think that's down. So that's just for the county's information. Budget amendments were provided for, commissioners motion to approve budget amendments.
I move.
All right, Craig, motion. Jim, second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right, let's strap it on now for some board appointments. So I'm going to try to do as many of these in batches instead of individually. Is that okay with everyone, please?
Not on some of them.
Yeah, here, no, no, some of them we won't, but some of them are, all right, let's start with the Cabarrus Rowan MPO. So currently, I am the TAC member representing the board, and Jim is the alternate, and also Ed Muir is the TCC member, and Shane is the alternate, and so we are up for reappointment. We have a motion to approve those.
So moved.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Cleveland Count, Cleveland Community Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, Claude Rogers applied for reappointment to a two-year term. Motion to approve, Claude.
I move.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 First one, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's just giving us information there.
Agriculture Board.
I did miss it. Ben Knox applied, thank you, applied to fill the remainder of her previous, previous member's term that expires May thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, so motion approved, Ben Knox.
I move.
All right, Jim, and then Craig, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, we got some decisions to make on the Board of Health. There's an engineer seat. We have Giles Goodman is currently filling the engineer seat on the Board of Health. He's applied for a second term. Sam Leavowitz is also applied for the engineer seat.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I nominate, I nominate Giles Goodman.
All right, thank you, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, let's see, and then we have a dentist seat, and Dr. John Webb currently fills a seat, he's applied for a second term. Motion, a second, please.
So moved.
All right, Craig and Judy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
General Public seat, we have one, two, three have applied to fill the general public seat.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Gary Caldwell.
Okay, Gary Caldwell, we have a second.
Second.
All right, Jim, second. All in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jim Sides.
Okay, we have a nomination for Jim Sides, we have a second.
Thank you.
All right, so, so I take votes on the first one first?
All in favor.
All right, and so all in favor of Gary Caldwell, say aye.
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 All right, that's three, so that's majority, do we move on?
Yep.
Uh, do we, all right, what do we, do we?
That's official, that's official.
Okay, so then, so then we appoint Gary Caldwell to that seat. Let's see, Jury Commissioner, our, our friend Michael Taylor applied for reappointment for a three-year term. Motion to approve, Michael.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 See, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Kyle Baker, applied to fill a vacant environmental health and transportation seat. He's not a Rowan County resident, but being a unique ward serving specialized emergency coordination needs for the county, there's no term limits, so motion to approve Kyle Baker.
I move.
All right, Craig?
Second.
Jim, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Parks and Recreation, Edmund Watts and Jim Beck applied for reappointment, and then there's a remaining seat that will become vacant December thirty-first, and Alex Bruce has applied, so motion to approve those three.
I move.
All right, Craig and Jim, all in favor say aye.
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 On our planning board, there's three seats on the planning board that will become vacant on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. We have four folks have applied, and there are three openings. Adam Sewell, Charles Michael Julian, Stephen Gino, Jeno Johnson, and Carla Foster. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I nominate Carla Foster.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, do we have another nomination?
I'll nominate Michael Julian.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have another nomination, Mike?
I'll nominate Adam Sewell.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
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 On then the Rescue Squad, Mike Caskey, his term expires December thirty-first, but he wishes to continue, and also Bill Feather applied for an at-large seat with a three-year term, which expires in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Motion to accept these gentlemen.
So moved.
All right, Mike and Jim, all in favor say aye.
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 Salisbury EDC, there are two openings here at the end of the year. Gary Blavon and Luke Fisher have applied, motion in a second to approve them.
I move.
All right, Jim and Craig, all in favor say aye.
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 Therapeutic Recreation Board, Nancy Collins applied, applied for reappointment, and motion to approve Nancy Collins.
So moved.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Authority Commissioner Pierce fills one of those seats, would like to be reappointed. I make a motion, we approve Craig, and Jim, second. All in favor say aye.
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 West Rand Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners, Jennifer, Jennifer McDaniel and Danny Ellenberg, they're eligible for reappointment, and also Matthew Graham Owen applied for a two-year term. Motion to approve those three.
I move.
All right, Craig and Jim, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, now we have Volunteer Fire Department Relief Fund Board of Trustees from Atwell, Steve Garver, Ryan Yost for Boston Heights, Jason Corrier, Charlie Haas. Cleveland Community is Greg Summitt, Ronald Heron. East Gold Hill, Carter Trexler, and Randy, Randall Earnhardt. Ellis Crossroad, Jerry Keppley and William Kyles. Enidville, Diane Bernie, and Michael Caskey, Jr., Junior. Franklin, Carter Thomason, and Jennifer Spry. Liberty is Lisa Trexler and Jeffrey Miller. Lock Township, Township is David Linker and James Basinger. Miller's Ferry, Michael Algood and David Oakley. Pool Town, Tina Barclay, Alan Shin. Rockwell Rural, Kenzie Overcash and Michael Peoples. Scotts, uh, Scots Irish, Michael Alstrup and Ryan Thompson. South Salisbury, Gary Caskey. Michael Goodman. Union is Kevin Kessler and Rick Waller. West Rowan, Eddie Mills and Philip Sloot. Woodleaf, Joseph Watson and Joseph Gregory, and we have a motion to approve those.
So moved. Second.
Jim and Craig, all in favor say aye.
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 We have no closed session. Do we have a motion to wish everyone a Merry Christmas?
Oh, whoa, whoa.
So moved.
All right, motion in a second. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Anything else? Is that it? All right, motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.